Someday you and I are involved for. Later in the session. Yeah, wait until the day I have to introduce the bill.
Yeah.
We'll go there and then hand signal. Yeah, it's right next door. So you're only working on daytime. And one of the staff over the bike is shut off. Only thing I knew was that one time we go away, get out. People. Yeah, when it was good, they were stuck and they wouldn't. Film moves. Yeah. Yeah. I would tell them that the whole walk of orders were to start feeding people. I'm not going to ride with that to handle. Okay. Thanks. We're going to have to call our Berlin. Town Council meeting for later, our first meeting of twenty twenty-three. Stand for the president. Like we did. The United States of America, particularly followed for which sense. My patient, my guy, into this for the clarity and justice of all. Thank you. Welcome.
Councilor Paula. I'm just Tina.
Here.
With Boston. Yes. There's.
Here.
I'm with Vanessa.
Here.
I'm with Russell.
Here.
I'm with the.
Here.
Very handsome.
Before I get started, I just want to mention unfortunately. Sheriff Paula, her dad died. Few days ago. So I. It's the. Wake at the month of the funeral, so un- uneffectively. I think they're, I think like from West Haven or Eastern Haven, but. It was in New Haven and they were, I think they were retired in Florida though, I believe. So fortunately, I wanted to be a bit. Get something arose to the. Of the town, the council. To her family.
Then we'll could.
Well, yeah, whatever. Whatever we think, I don't know, sometimes we do out of all. Yeah. Yeah, so anyway, our condolences out to.
Yeah.
Sandy and her family. Not that they're the good time, it's probably the worst time. Okay. And then next we have our. Audience of citizens. Anyone wants to address the council on anything? Yes, sir, come on.
Court of Bootia, which Dean Skinner room?
Away.
Good. So I'm here just to raise necessarily a concern, although it's a question regards to the public hearing. The question of raising the bid limit level threshold. Generally, it's actually a good idea, I think it's a business move, twenty-five thousand dollar level. Makes us more competitive, makes us more agile. But why was this a charter question? Like, I don't understand. First of all, why was a charter question? Why hasn't this ordinance been raised forever? I mean, the general statute governing this, it's been on the books for almost forty years. Right? Why?
That's wrong. Nothing changes for forty years.
I know, but it's changing. That was good. That guy should have moved. Yeah.
Well, we're finally going to get it done, I think.
Suppose, but I mean, it does raise another concern. That charter question is defeated.
Yeah.
Orders voted against it.
Yeah.
So. It's not necessarily the greatest look, having counsel override ostensibly will.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I think the thinking, no, I appreciate the comments, we debated this a little bit, but I think because it is. First state statute.
Yeah.
Technically would override our charter. But we wanted to ask the people and I, I think unfortunately what tends to happen with. The kind of cleanup portion of those charter questions. Once people vote now on, we've had this happen many times with our charter revisions, like if they vote now on one of them, they just seem to vote now on everything. Because none of the, none of the one. Later, I mean, the BNA was, you know, kind of a big one and the rest of them kind of just followed, no. And so I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, most towns have it at twenty-five, we get state statutes twenty-five.
Oh, no, I, I understand, it's just.
Yeah.
The process.
Yeah.
That went through the revision commission and council, why was that even added?
Yeah, well, loo- looking back.
Yeah.
Probably shouldn't have added. It's always twenty twenty, right? So looking back, we probably, we always. Are, you know, we, we want to send it to the voters and stuff like that, just doesn't give appeal sometimes, but we do recognize that the questions. When we lump them all together. Typically not a good, not a good thing, because people don't read up on it and don't understand them or don't read them, I just, they, they didn't want them to know. If any of the ones they read, like the bigger topic seems to be now, we, we noted that they sort of know on all of them, so.
Well, it's, it's interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, probably wasn't the best thought out, some of those questions in the end, you know, we put them in there, but.
Certainly in hindsight.
Yeah, well, well, it's like the one they voted no on the, which we were trying to fix the language in the charter about the volunteer part department. We needed to, you know, that day, the day is coming, I'm sure, hopefully not for a long time, but we might need to hire a few. Paid members of the volunteer part, you know, of making the paid department, just a few people, a lot of towns, people hybrid like that.
Sure.
People go to that town, so I mean, you know, I don't, I'm not sure, but fortunately it's hard to get the information out, I'm sure people read it, if we do, a lot of times. That's the, seems to be what the trend is.
Still leaves that question unanswered of why was that?
But. Well, I think, no, I think the reason we added it was to, to get voters to look at it and understand it, but I don't, I don't think they did. Fortunately, but we try, we try to get information out and it's very difficult to. For that people to read everything, which shunners they have all their business, we kind of live it every day, most folks don't.
Great.
Fortunately, so anyway, I appreciate the comment.
Yeah.
Thanks. Anyone else in the public hearing have anything online as well? No more. Our audience of citizens, the. They're all update, you know, I, I have received. I'll give this, you wrote. Some complaints about our dog park, I know it's unleashed. Where the unleashed dogs are now running around outside of the house in, in great numbers on a particular day. So. My question would be to that. And enforce, any enforcement, do we, have we. Control, do we have a log of how many times animal control goes there, do we have comments that may or may not have been issued, but.
So. First time, if somebody sees them.
Yeah.
Have them please call at a date in time, because we are. Sending them to by Centino. Yeah, it's a little bit still correct.
Okay.
And except for one or two occasions when people are out there, they have not seen anything. So I'm curious as to when this is happening.
Yeah. Probably during the day and weekdays.
Okay.
Multiple weekdays.
But they do, do, we have a lot of, when they.
We have a lot, how many times they go by there?
Exactly.
Do they get out and walk the trail and they just drive by?
And I have, I have to run by both places and I've seen them.
Okay, okay.
So it'll be nice to know exactly.
Okay, well, we'll get time, so maybe I'll try and put the word out to. Run people to call and I, I also understood that folks are still. That place is, again, they kind of went away, now they're.
Yeah, I mean.
A few, I mean, not crazy, but it seems to be. The other one at Crystal Creek, the new one. Does seem to be. From a couple complaints I've heard, a little bit overwhelming, I guess, they're all. Off the leash, they're off the leash in the parking lot, they're off the leash in the trail.
I'm really having, saying I'm not believing it.
Yeah, 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 I, I, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm.
In the daytime.
Okay.
And I have not seen that, so. The, somehow people tend, must be doing it, obviously, somebody.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I can only assume they're telling me the truth, I don't, I don't, I don't. Polygraph them, but I don't know.
The second one is. We are, the initial first six months, we're still continuing that is an education process. It's a verbal warning, give them the ordinance.
Okay.
Tell them what they're supposed to do. Then at some point, I would think by spring, we would start. The friendly softer approach at the beginning.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll, we'll do that.
Let's all know.
And the third one I would add is we are considering in our budget process, trying to keep it still under two percent increase that has requested. To find a way to increase hours. But we have one point. Just a one point behind FTE right now, but I'll, 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 right? Either increase the hours or either part-time person in the budget to do that, because. It is Monday through Friday is one person, right? Wednesday, Sunday. Friday, there's overlap and Saturday, Sunday. There are one person, part-time, first time, yeah. So for them to clean up internally, feed the animals, do all the things that they're supposed to do and to be outside. Then it's not an easy path.
Can the police department help out? If they're running.
So we had this conversation, keeps going to, and their numbers have gone down a lot. Officers.
No, no, that, yes, yes.
So. It, it. It is the highest priority and I'm sure they have said, and they, with the back row, they could go and.
Yeah.
Help us out.
Yeah.
Normally. I know, it's that, showing other towns, animal control is part of the PD and for some reason. So master was created many years ago.
Yeah.
That. Created, the animal can pull out of the PD and go out of the town, right? And. Council at some point. Yeah, not you.
Yeah, we probably need to look at that.
Well, we've done this like three times.
I know, I mean, I, you know, my concern with that change gone well before any of us, I think, were on the council, but. What is that kind of the, the safety of the animal control officer who's not on the PD system? And I think. I'm mistaken too, now I'm thinking about it. Animal control officer has to write a citation. I think, if I remember my law enforcement days. They would have to go on the collect system. I believe, which if, if the person's not under the authority of the PD, I don't think they have the authority to do that, and I could be wrong on that, I'm trying to go back in my memory somehow, but. I, we, we need to figure this out, I mean, you know, I mean, and, and my, you know, the biggest concern, like I think we have talked about it, I know we've looked at this. I thank you for looking at it, but is. My greatest fear is that, you know, the person ducked, she ducked her alone and, you know, something happens. Is she not on the, is she, is she not on the PD radio frequency? She not, that's not good, that's, that's really a safety issue there, I mean, for her, for, for animal control officer, all, you know, all. No, that's the problem, so. Revisit that somehow and, you know, that, that concerns me more than anything is the safety of our employees, obviously.
You realize there's an agreement.
I do, I do.
By the animal control, the union.
Yeah. I, I get it, but.
Unless all two bodies agree.
So something, let, let's say some horrible thing happens, the agreement's not, you know, I get the agreement, it's not going to be worth the paper it's written on, God forbid. Someone gets hurt because they can't, they have no backup, you know, and a. Pitbull attacks somebody and they can't get their phone or they don't check in with the PD, I, I don't know. But we, we probably have to come up with some, you know, solution at a minimum on that. That's the most important thing. So I don't know. But we, maybe we can revisit that, that agreement was made a long, quite a while ago, right? When is the subject attorney?
Whenever the animal control office leaves.
Okay.
Oh, man.
Should have to be renegotiated with every new.
No, no.
Or could these reopen? Just that.
This one that I can't. If animal control.
So I, you know, we'll, we'll look at, yeah, we'll, we'll look at it, but, but i- if, if we could just, I, you know, make sure they're patrolling, you know, people are complaining. And it seems to be. A few people multiple times at the park that have run into, like, running around. One instance apparently. Chasing someone.
Is it during the daytime?
During the daytime, a weekday, I believe, yeah, pretty sure that's what we're talking about, most of the times that I've been told about. And in the park. So just to summarize enforcement. So log a complaint. Call animal control.
Yeah.
Give the date and the time of the request or of the incident. And then, and no one will be made of it and we'll send animal control out there to look up on the situation. At least for now, until the situation is resolved. Yeah. Do, do, do we know any complaints that have been logged?
I don't know.
Oh, it's not. Do we chat? Animal controls, they would now run out of man, whether they just call her the, the number and leave a message? What if they call the, the PD, the dispatch, can they call the dispatch, they would contact her?
They can contact them, yes, but I don't think anybody has.
Okay.
What do my knowledge?
Yeah, I just don't want to ruin what we spent so much time. Trying to fix and make better, and now it seems to be, might have turned into. Worse.
Yeah.
Something worse, but.
Let's find, because I do hear good things about the box too.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think I mean to say it's all bad, but. I've just heard several people say they've, you know, been there frequent times and do see dogs.
Can you give me the names of the people?
Well, yeah, I think we might be running into the. I kind of told them, like, we'll call the town.
Yeah.
So we might be running.
Call me, call them.
I can, I can do that, I'm calling, maybe that's more comfortable, I don't know if they want to call the police department, I don't know if they called animal control, I, I didn't really. Question it, I just said, well, you know, make a complaint or. They can tell me, I'll pass it along, I don't know if they did or not, that's why I'm curious. If they, had been any complaints. Yeah, I always pass them, I'll call the town, call. You know, animal control. Old town manager, but, but it's, as long as we're controlling it and if we, you know, could make sure it's being logged, so at least we know what we're trying to do to keep it safe, right? It's amazing, I'm sure we are. All right, that, that's it for. My comments, so now we will go to our meeting agenda, we'll start with our consent agenda, there's two items, the. I approve the request of Berlin helping Berlin Foundation to weigh the cost of one police officer estimated approximately three to three five dollars associated with having a flag football game. Under at Sage Park on Tuesday, November twenty. Number twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, was that?
So they.
I was gonna say, yeah, all right. I was. Gotcha, okay, okay, that's fine. Except my, number two is accept my donation. Totally. Seventeen twenty-six seventy-six deposit, one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars into library agency account purchases, subscription to the value line database and book material and deposit five. Seventy-six seventy-six into the friend of the library miscellaneous account to purchase. To museum paths renewal and coffee supplies, but accept the donation of books with an appropriate value of ninety-four dollars, ninety cents, we'd be added to the appropriate department. Collection, so those are two consent agenda items, but does anyone have any comments or questions on them? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to the consent agenda as a.
Thank you, second on that.
Second, yeah.
All right, any other additional comments or questions? None, all those in favor?
Hi.
Close, right motion here. Thank you, so now we are on our public hearing. Go ahead and. Council. On time, we'll meet tonight in our council chamber, as we are, today, January third at seven o'clock, for the purpose of holding public hearing on following the court's ordinance, the Berlin. Cogo, chapter sixteen, taxation and finance, increased bid threshold. For the purchase of goods and services, twenty-five thousand in accordance with Connecticut general statutes. Section seven dash one forty-eight V. So now we're in the public. Yeah, so now we're, we're in a public hearing, so we can have public comments, if anyone, we already heard pictures of comments. In our audience of citizens, which will incorporate any other public comments here or online? None, we'll go ahead and close the public comments and the council comments.
What I'm going to say is needed every year, we vote a large number of vendors, exactly. From the threshold, basically, it comes to us all the time. I think it's a lot overdue. Point that was made, it was in the charter change. Tell us to be smoother and anyways, the attorney changed the charter, so another council couldn't change it back, but. This way it'll be an ordinance. And if it didn't work well, another topic could change. Reason for that.
So, Charlie, was that, was a concept discussed in either offline or in some of the charter revision committees as to whether you're going to do it by, or insert by charter?
It was discussed, which way was best? I mean, since we were doing a charter revision anyway, it was kind of an avalanche while we're here, trying to make it work. The mayor explained, everybody just voted against everything, so they got swept under the rug or everything else.
And, and I think the important consideration in this particular instance, and Mark, you had mentioned the, the fire marshal language that was included in the referendum as well, but.
Right.
I, I think that, that, the comparison is interesting because both were part of the same catch-all omnibus question, which. It's, you know, I, I thought long and hard about this when we brought it up at the ordinance committee meeting, when we first discussed it and then afterward, and. You know, there is, there is a question of whether or not this has already been a decided issue during the charter referendum and consider, I think it'd be a different question if the question was asked. Individually, but I think because this was a catch-all question where. Many different factors were considered simultaneously and voters had to make the decision to vote on the entire question as a whole. I don't know that this particular issue was asked and answered on its own, so that's. Why I think this situation is a particularly unique one and also just, you know. Maybe Jeff, we can loop you into this discussion as well, I hate to put you on the spot, but I love to put you on the spot, but. Can we just, I, we had talked about this in the ordinance committee meeting, but just for the sake of the record, can you just reference and briefly discuss the statute that allows us to do this?
Sure. About, I guess it's been around thirty. About thirty-three, thirty-four years ago, the legislature. Under the municipal powers act and seven dash one forty-eight. Adopted seven one forty-eight V. And what seven one forty-eight V does is it specifically provides that notwithstanding. Any charter provision or special act to the contrary, any municipality may by ordinance. Establish a bid limit as long as that limit does not exceed the amount established in that stat, that statute, seven one forty-eight V. Originally, that limit was a thousand bucks. In two thousand eight, it was increased to seventy-five hundred dollars. In two thousand thirteen, it was increased to the current limit of twenty-five thousand dollars. So the statute specifically contemplates that there may be a charter provision. That says otherwise and gives municipalities under the municipal powers act. The authority and the jurisdiction to establish a bid limit. As long as that threshold doesn't exceed the amount in the statute.
Thanks, Jeff.
Sure.
Any other council question? And this will of course help us to be a little bit more efficient with our town government as we. Approve funding going forward. Different items under the, under this threshold, so. Hearing no other comments, we've got to close the public comments, which we already closed, and the town council comments, and go ahead and. Close the. The public hearing at this point. Right? On to. Reports.
Great, thank you. So we started with the, the last meeting with the R and A. And we had talked about introducing reports, updates from different boards and commissions, other POs. It's so much good that's happening here and planning and thinking involved. That will affect our future, it'll be good for all of you to be informed of what's going on directly, hear them bits and pieces. Today we have, morning Tuesday from any zoning commission, as well as. Development director Chris Edge will give you an update from. You know, develop on those two. Kind of, look at the time, they all have a good hand and hands to the public to work together. What do you worry?
Hey.
Hello, Warren.
Hey, everybody.
Happy New Year.
And I'm hoping for a peaceful and healthy new year for everybody.
Peaceful and good.
Been a challenging last few. Um, so, as most of you probably know, I'm not the biggest fan of public speaking, so I did pray that they may out and I'll do my best to. The conversation, however, no promises. Um, I want to start by expressing my appreciation for supporting our department as we worked through some difficult staffing issues. And have worked to fill the separate assistant town planner and zoning enforcement officer jobs, and we have. Um, replaced, we can fill both those positions, so we're out signing time in our department. And we've also gotten to replace some of our decades old furniture. Fran has a new desk. Everything was a nineteen-seventies desk.
Oh, and it's vintage. The rec room, yeah, it's a vintage and retro, I don't know if we should do that, that's.
Those are high.
Yeah. Sorry. That's funny, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, quality. Um, although they last. Um, our new assistant planner is Dylan. Um, he started in August, he's helping and learning all aspects of the department, he's continued in on a lot of things. He has the CEO background, so he hit the ground running when he started with zoning efforts and building permit review. Until the vacant CEO position was finally filled in November. In November, the CEO Polly started. And he also has an enforcement background, housing enforcement, and he's focusing now on, we pulled him from most of the, the permit duties and he's focusing on enforcement. Pretty much only and has also turned to BLA. So he's going over the BLA list, which I think will. One of your upcoming meetings.
Help us out along those.
And while you're reviewing the things that are on the BLA list, or whether anything can be removed, as well as looking through the zoning complaints to see if anything should be added. To the BLA list that falls within the parameters of BLA. BLA and unsightly materials are different issues, one of the critical things about BLA being vacant. That's one of the critical things, so a lot of people call and making a BLA complaint to our office or the zoning office and it's unsightly materials. So that's the differentiation that I like to get out in the public whenever. So it was also a rough start when they both started, we had quite a bit of illness. Lot ago, our office through November and December, and we're hopeful for, again, a healthier new year. Once we're more caught up, Polly will take over more of the permitting, building permit application reviews and things like that, and Dylan will work more closely with me. To the ultimate goal of transitioning to splitting up the commission and Boardley is on task between the three of us. That'll be happy. Um. Chris will give you an overview. Chris will give you an overview of approved projects, project status and inquiries relating businesses and. County development stuff when I'm done, but I'm gonna focus mainly on planning and zoning commission items. So as I believe you're all aware, we have had been very busy with applications, including some complex and some contract. Well, there. I want everyone to know, feel free to reach out to our office if you have questions about applications. While we're not as up and running digitally as I'd like to be, we'll get there with the new staffing. And at this time, in the meantime, we can email out materials and or help you go through any applications if you've got questions. Stop in, call us, and we'll try to get you information. Some of the recent and upcoming planning and zoning commission items that may garner particular interest include. Berlin zoning regulation, section eleven D B. It's the planned residential infill development. Provisions of the zoning regulations, which provides for redevelopment of nonconforming motel sites along the Berlin turnpike. The current provisions were adopted in twenty twenty one after public hearings. And was is been referenced in the housing plan that was out last year. And is planned to be referenced in the plan of conservation and development which is this year. As adding housing options, it's one of the ways the town is going to achieve some housing option goals. It was the application, we did get an application for redevelopment of one motel site just north of Meadow Lane on the southbound side of the turnpike. I believe it was called the Lamingo Motel. I wasn't able to remember that. But and that was ultimately denied, that application or that denial has been appealed to the courts. The position was appealed. In relation to that, we have an application from a neighboring property owner of that site to delete the text. Get rid of the redevelopment text from hotels, and we also have a text amendment proposed by me. With the direction of zoning commission, which will met with. Both those public hearings are gonna be held on January nineteenth, open on January nineteenth.
So just while we're on it, just that, so that text amendment that they wanna get rid of. Then we just passed that recently?
It was a twenty twenty one text amendment. And.
And we passed it, we had the development come in, we denied it, and now we're getting sued. So was I deny our denial not, I mean, if there was a text amendment that allowed that development, I was curious how we get to a law.
Application, so that they, you know, the. The. Foundation of the appeal is laid out in the appeal as to what. What they're, I guess, what they're appealing, why they say it wasn't a valid decision as far as the applicant goes and the presenting the case with the help of. Our capable council to develop the argument for the plan and zoning commission's decision being. They are nice.
The A thirty G appeal?
It is not.
No, it's not.
No, it is. And we did have an affordable component, and the regulation does provide affordable. Units in. The proposed development. We'll be working on that one, but it will be having those new public hearings. I'm sure. I'll give a limited update on a couple of items that are under pending. Public hearing like that for planning zoning commission, but just so that you know what's up with them. The H two O farm on the Chamber of Highway. It's the hydroponic farming facility just north of Apple Lane in the P O B industrial district. The tax allowing for the text, which was approved also in twenty twenty one after public hearing. Allows four large scale greenhouses to be built previously, greenhouses up to five thousand square feet for elaborate accessory structures on farms. So. The proposal is a site plan application, but due to the public interests, the commission and applicant agreed to hold a public hearing, which is allowed in the. Zoning regulation if the commission chooses to do so. Hold a public hearing or a public information session, they go there to hold a public hearing. However, they they are still bound by site plan criteria and the timelines offered for site plans. So we will, the timeline. Mandates that they need to close the public hearing on the twelfth and or and decide the application that night unless the applicant agrees to another extension. So that's coming up there. The second item that's an open public hearing is five fifty five fifty four Berlin Turnpike LLC. It's for a B T D, which is Berlin, Berlin Turnpike Development Overlay Zone. For a mixed use development utilizing three properties that are. It includes the existing commercial site where A B C supply is. A small parcel to the north, which was previously approved for an auto repair facility. And the vacant parcel behind A B C that's adjacent to the town sportsman's pond and water control property. And that will be for three apartment buildings, the mixed use being the two sites up front, A B C and the. And smaller site and then three apartment. It has, we've hired a consultant, our consultants, third party review consultants, as we did with the parcel to the north, which is with other P T D. Project, which is under construction, that's probably called the Giadio project. Around the sewer pump station, the project there, that was is also a B T D project. And that hearing after the reviews of the consult reviews and and subsequent modifications off through the public hearing process. We expect that public hearing to close up itself as well. Then coming up for planning and zoning commission, a few items that, a few of the pending applications, but these are the ones that. Seem to garner interest by call to our office, that now may may have interest for interest as well. C C A R C has a proposal to locate a center at the former Lutheran church on the Berlin highway. They propose to utilize existing building for day programs, including life skills and assistance funding jobs. The. Into February, where we have a text amendment. And modification to the previously approved T O D Newport project at Steel Boulevard. They're doing proposing some modifications to the apartment buildings. That were approved in the special permanent site plan application and as part of the building, so. Looking to move into the phase of building those and construction costs as well as some technical. Constraints, they're looking to make some modifications. A text amendment relating to funeral homes with limited services in the G I zones. And that would allow for transport by the crematory facility, they currently cannot transport bodies. As crematory, they need to have the funerals all standard stitching down. And then we have some items that will also be coming to town council. So if I'm wanting for active from everyone, we're continuing to work, looking for a date for the informational meeting. That we previously discussed or mentioned on cannabis with the town council and the planning and zoning commission. And what we're looking to do is to. Get some stakeholders that have experience with either facilities or regulation. And have them come speak and enlighten everyone on the operations and what. Our town man may not expect and what may or may not want to be regulated, lessons learned. In a lot of ways, and I'd like to pose a couple of. I'd pose a date and then a couple of alternatives and see what kind of feedback I can get, and then take that. And zoning commission, I'm gonna start with Wednesday, January twenty fifth at six. Doing for the moon at six o'clock. Bottom times that's struggle. And the alternate dates after perusing the town calendar and other committees and commissions, I. These were the dates I came up with, we have an extra Monday and an extra Tuesday in January, so January thirty and January thirty first are alternatives to. Wednesday, January twenty. Where do you want me to go with that at this point, or you all wanna look at your calendars and email me or?
So we all don't forget, including myself. What, what are we thinking about these dates, folks? Little. The twenty fifth, this one would be twenty sixth, right?
Wednesday, twenty.
Twenty fifth, yeah, twenty fifth. Right, council meeting is the seventeenth, right? Excellent.
Yes.
And that's it for January?
Yes.
I wish that was for January.
Well.
You have only the Jack.
For some of you.
Oh, it's going up fast, Doc.
You guys think of the twenty. Good, good, good.
Me, yeah.
Jack, good, yep, that's right.
Six, nine, good, good.
Six o'clock.
How six down?
Six o'clock, should be alright.
Early, I know.
Moment.
No, I think that was okay.
Believe sometimes I get feedback that. Good thing you're not spitting, it's challenged. And then how about, so we do have the. Over the zoning commission, so. Do we think about one of those alternates on the Monday or Tuesday?
You wanna try the thirty first, Tuesday?
Sure.
As a as a possible alternate that. Which, I'm sorry, which is the twenty twenty sixth. Thirty first, I'm sorry. As an alternative.
Terminately, by now.
The Jeff information session. It'll be question, answer, informational, we're gonna try to have, you know, maybe. Police departments, growers, some maybe retailers. Some communities that may or may not. Communities that may. Lessons learned.
From Mass are coming?
Perhaps, yes.
I think it just suggests to you that next to students, it's probably not a good guy to use their their state. I will tell you from experience, made a mess of the program, but that's just my opinion of what I've read and heard and seen, but.
Really not.
I I'm not sure that's the best place, I don't know if you could find people, you know, in. Other states or Connecticut, but it's, you know, the reg- the regulations are so different in every state, it's hard. Compare apples to apples because, right, it's all done by state law and it's, every state has its unique experience, Connecticut. Has had a good one so far with the medical program, other states, not not so much. For the developed use, they've. Some have crashed and burned, some have won on it, be fine, but this stuff just. The word of God, be careful which state you pick. Sometimes it might be, it's not, it wasn't too pleasant for to get through the program.
Thank you very much. On the same note, to further that, I've heard very good experiences and would also like to encourage that. Participation, I understand we haven't offered to tour a facility. And it has had great reviews by other commission, other towns planners. And told that it's a worthwhile experience, so if perhaps after that informational meeting, we can pursue doing something.
That'd be good.
Where is the facility? Is it around here?
Okay, all. Very close, bordering town. You have it in. Excellent. How was security directly? I don't know who that is, I'll find out.
Did you get Charlie some samples?
No, yeah, I'm a smaller guy. From my past career, I've been to different places.
You you got your cap, right?
Yeah, I have.
Okay, moving on. We have a few reviews about twenty twenty four reviews, how you can post a view or play with those, what those are, but we expect to see. New turf, maybe school outdoor classroom area. And then some upcoming easement, open space and room acceptances that are pending from. Approved or substantially built subdivisions that have been around. Get those legalized and on the boats. And. Only two more things, but this one is the plan of conservation and development, the O C D committee, planning and zoning commission, forms of planning. The plan of conservation and development committee to work on plans that's due later this year. We are currently working on drafting the plan, but also at the same time. Working to hold meetings with different commissions as we work through an implementation plan as well. So that we get priorities and make sure that we take it into consideration as we're working with the consultant. From such as the conservation commission, the economic development commission, some other stakeholders in town, those boards and commissions, we're gonna be working with them over the course of the next month or so. To attend their meetings, either Jim Mahoney and or I going to those meetings and getting feedback on the outlines we've come up with so far. That the committee has been working on, and then we do, we should still be on track to bring the final plan for the council to review in late spring. Possibly early summer. I'll have to spring those with meetings and illnesses and all those lovely things we've seen over the last couple of years on athletic side events. The only other thing I want to particularly mention, which did not claim in the zoning commission, is the historic district commission. They've been rather enthusiastic to and continue, hope to continue to work on a proposal for a demolition delay ordinance. We've seen some. Significant buildings in town be not saved over the last couple of years and it's created some concern, we have a great P T D five survey of. Important buildings or significant buildings in town that was done around the time of the historic district being born, but at the same time, it includes. Properties throughout town. And the mission has already started. Our members of the commission have already started to get ordinance language from other towns, successes and failures and feedback from them, so that hopefully.
Maureen, is that survey maintained through the historic commission, or is that something we could get from you? I would love to take a look at it.
It's it's an old three ring binder in my.
Let's go happy, you don't know that.
Yeah, we have paper copies, we might have scanned it, I'll have it too, you have it too, so yes, it's an authentic green binder. Whenever I get a demo correct, I try to do it. If there's anything about the software.
I just want to recognize Maureen and banker, taking my calls. My brother and I, by the week around town, I, one bugaboo I have is our junk cars sitting all over town and especially by the train station. And Maureen has done well in getting rid of most of them, and she, to my amazement, she takes my job. But I just wanna thank her publicly for doing a good job, I appreciate it.
But really, I need the support of like the zoning officers, so you hit the ground running, and that was one of the items that hit. You know, we that particular site, we clean it up and then they re-rig it and clean it and then I.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. So now I'm gonna turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, Maureen.
The negative five minutes that I probably provided.
Thank you, thank you for all your hard work, I know you guys are super busy and playing, I appreciate all you guys do and. Good luck with all your oncoming, upcoming projects. And before we go further, I had a complaint from our studio audience out there that it's echoing in here badly, so so bad they can't understand what was being said. Probably because of the size of the crowd, it's echoing on everyone in there, but I don't I don't know why that would be. Which I have passed input, but our audio is not very good. And some of our meetings, I it just seems to be like nothing specific to each, you know, it's just different times, different meetings, right?
Sure.
While you're doing that.
Yep.
We have engaged the services of a professional to completely redo the town council chamber.
Oh.
Sound system, the microphones. Computer, everything, it's gonna cost money, but. When the budget comes, I would.
Forget it, that.
Appreciate you.
It's not free, come on. Um, oh, that's great.
Be straight up the art, but what Mass has got.
What? Better than this, is it uh now?
Jeff. Not field. Attorney Denafio, can you hear us?
Attorney Denafio, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Did you have problems earlier hearing us?
Yes.
Is it better now?
Yes.
As is the member of the audience says, it's much better now, so whatever you did, Kate. We don't need the consultant, we have you, you fixed it now, just, just for tonight, but uh when, when is that happening in Roche, just so we know?
Soon as we get through the budget.
Oh, okay, okay.
Request that's coming.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I think, you know, having been to some other towns around Newington notably. I hate to say this, there's as much better than ours, but so, you know, that's.
Not as.
Better, much better, it's just better, I don't, I don't.
I even hate to say this.
I hate.
Since got a seven million dollar capital budget.
Oh. Well. There's other things that aren't as good in Newington, and their mill rate reflects that too, right? Yeah, so we can get that, but.
So, we, it's certain things we ought to make an investment.
Yeah.
It's for the long haul, this place is used by so many different.
Well, yeah, sure, no, that's probably one of the more important things.
Zoom world and uh.
Is here to stay, yes, agreed. I agree.
We should make an investment and.
Yeah. Agreed, agreed. Okay, that's, that's great, thank you, thanks for fixing it, Kate, cause apparently. Other people now that didn't say anything are saying it's better, so, okay, so, all right, good, all right, whatever.
I'm glad they have your phone number.
Yeah, yeah, that's all right, I'm gonna refer them to you next time, that's what I wanna do. Anyway, yes, welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Haven't seen you for a long time.
No, I uh wanted to say thank you to everyone.
Sure.
Uh for your support, particularly with the uh promotion, marketing, budget, economic development the last couple of years, um it's been bumped up. And we can see through the it's all in Berlin effort that it's starting to pay off. The Instagram account is just shy of a thousand followers, we started with.
Wow.
In May, we uh I brought on three different um consultants, interestingly enough, all women owned businesses to help me with social media and marketing, one who's a local videographer photographer. At the website, and now we're really starting to get a lot of um really great momentum behind us. Hearing some great things from a lot of people, including people who've here most of their life, who now are starting to feel like we're changing things and the vibe is a place you wanna be.
That's great, well, so see that, Newington, that's not topping us, we're beating them out now, okay, so they could have a better audio, but we have better economic development at the moment, so.
Have a better vibe.
Yes, there we go.
Couple highlights going on. Um we have done uh seventy two ribbon cuttings or ground breakings between September twenty twenty and the end of December. Um including forty two which are women owned uh or operated, I just think that's pretty amazing, um a lot of that is on entrepreneurship, we've seen a lot of. Businesses which have essentially gone from home based cottage to opening a location. Uh we have a home decor segment that I didn't even know existed in nineteen, twenty nineteen, which is exciting, we're starting to see that um grow, which is tremendous, uh two of them. Will be doing ribbon cuttings for their expansions in January, which is dragonfly design and ravishing decor, so we can see that's working well. Just gonna hit some highlights, uh task of Ford, we broke ground, or they broke ground on a thirty two thousand square foot pro elite commercial service facility. Likely a fall twenty twenty three opening, this is the first one in New England. They do a lot of work with commercial trucks and we're excited that they've put the first one here in Berlin. Nine Steel Boulevard was completed, as we know, um Hop House Gastropub is set to open in March twenty twenty three. Uh Trio Home Care is gonna be expanding into the building, um a local attorney is gonna be opening their office there. And then the plan right now is for a seafood restaurant to open in April twenty twenty three, which is a building in the back. Where they have the footings already in immediately behind Nine Steel, so things are moving along very well. Air Temp, uh which is a company uh owned by a Berlin resident, Jeff Leon, uh purchased a building at sixty three Fuller Way, bringing over a hundred employees, a hundred vehicles. From Southington here, if you've not been down Fuller Way, you need to check it out, it's the first building on the left. He did an amazing job, on the right hand side is Bright Feeds, that is the company that takes food waste, processes it, and it comes out the other end as feed for animals. So it's really nice uh green recycling, we actually had the commissioner of D E P here to see it, so that's a really great company. Uh Priority Electric is getting close to the completion of about a ten thousand square foot building right next to Tyler Equipment.
Where are they coming from?
Uh New Britain.
What a shame.
Um, both the Pryor brothers who grew up here, um again, had the business there and the sons are gonna be taking over in the next couple of years. They have uh an approval to build a second building as well, they're probably leasing it out.
Wow.
Uh Starbucks was approved, they'll be locating it, our blockbuster building next to C V S.
That's great.
Uh Vale Sports Club, which is a Middletown operation right now, is gonna be occupying about a twenty two thousand square foot indoor basketball facility to be built on Four Rod Road.
Oh, that's the new one, that was uh, that, 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 that got, they, they got approved, right?
It did, it's exciting for the fact that they have a great following in their Middletown location and basketball, pretty much any school in Middlesex County, they're using it right now for the. Bring a lot of people to town.
Wonderful.
And the hope again would be is the kids are there and adults would go out and spend money locally. Uh Prism Academy, um this is the uh twin sisters who have the school for children with autism, uh they're in the process of purchasing the Morland Hill School. I'm very excited about this personally, because many times you see a school and it turns into apartments, condos, or it gets demolished. Back at this staying as a school is tremendous, and it is helping students both in Berlin and outside, it's students whose educational needs are greater than the school system can handle. And the student actually goes to Prism Academy at Morland Hill School, so that's really an, an exciting thing.
Uh that's great.
Between uh September first and December thirty first, we gave out twenty five milestone awards, um those were from twenty five years, which is Jukun Kukums. Up to a hundred and twenty years, which is Berlin Steel. Already we have about a dozen this year that we're gonna be doing and um the response has been tremendous. These are largely companies that we. Hate to say it, but kind of forget about that, written transportation, Drain Doctor, Sir Royce Higgins, a lot of other folks, and they were really appreciative, and the part that I love most. Was the ability to thank their employees. I estimate about eighty to eighty five percent of our daytime population never stopped coming to work during COVID. Those are the folks that kept our economy going, the restaurants, the retail, the service. I think we're thriving as we are because of all these great companies and their employees which have devoted spending money locally. Uh upcoming activity, um Connecticut Self Store, which will be coming in front of planning and zoning, is looking to do a self storage facility. On a vacant parcel on the Turnpike just north of Safari Golf. Um the parcel's been there, it's about seven acres, it's never been developed, the good thing is Connecticut Self Store has done this in numerous places. We've worked very closely with them on language so that it would fit in the area. There is a Berlin based veterinarian looking to grow and relocate up to the Accura Complex on the Turnpike, which will also be in P N Z relatively soon. Uh the eighty eight units on the downside uh on Demming Road of the Ever Source Campus are coming close to completion, uh that is gonna be thirty percent affordable. Um permitting is underway for other projects as well, which were mentioned, including uh Diadio, Clapacki, Orsini and Newport. And basically, most of the delays right now have been due to. Couple things, D O T, supply chains and the like, but the good news is, is we see activity continuing in twenty twenty three and getting these to, a lot of these to completion. Upcoming activity as well is, and actually um. I'll call her my compatriot, uh which is um Kristen Yusef, who was just at the Veterans Commission meeting. We're looking to do a farmers and crafters market in the spring at Veterans Park. So she said she'd gotten a great response, we're gonna work through the process, and the idea again would be to highlight both our local farmers. Craft people, even some small businesses, and it really bring it back as a community event. Cause I think that's what it was for many years when it was on Farmington Avenue, you'd come down, it wasn't just about the. Veggies, and I think adding the artisans to it is gonna be a nice piece of the puzzle, we're excited about that, we're just, this was the first piece tonight. As you've probably seen, the town of Berlin received a, uh we're receiving a one and a half million dollar grant from D E C D, which will give um. Newport, our wonderful partner, the ability to do ten more units uh behind uh the existing Newport Center property. So known as the Tyvek Building, a portion of them will be affordable, uh it's also gonna give us the ability to do a major upgrade of the. Connecticut, Central Connecticut Transition Academy, um that's an academy that both Cromwell High and Berlin High students go to. Tends to be folks with special needs, and again, helping them with some of the things, getting into the jobs, life skills, et cetera. Um some folks that go to this academy, uh excuse me, the, the Transition Center will sometimes transition over to. A C C R C or other organizations, so the nice thing to, it really worked out well, this is one of the most amazing things where. Town, the Y M C A, the Board of Ed, Newport. Fire Department, a lot of folks work together, and then the other pieces, there's gonna be a trail that's gonna come in through the rear into the uh fire department property. We, as in Jim Mahoney and myself, are becoming to you uh to get permission to go out for a public R F Q on a six acre parcel on Christian Lane, uh this parcel. Has about a hundred thousand dollars in back taxes, um we're looking to get it developed, it's a property that the town does not want to take on. Believe there's some contamination, um we've tried to get monies for assessment, the problem is without a somebody on the back end with a project. If we don't get the monies, the idea would be as we go out for the R F Q, we get proposals from. Mostly companies, I, I don't think a developer with a pipe dream is what we're looking for, I think a company like to come in, build a building. For their business there, we'd work with them through the process, and so that'll hopefully be coming to them in the next thirty days and. Really help get this back on the tax rolls uh and make it viable, it's the last heavy industrial piece we have in town. We're excited to bring that to you and think the R F Q process is the, the, the best and fairest way to do it, we can see who's gonna come in with it. Because it's heavy industrial, it can be some of the ones that, construction or otherwise, that maybe aren't a fit for Four Rod Road. Couple events I'm looking to do, appreciation event, we had done this a couple of years ago, which was a thank you to folks that had served on commissions as well as this. This body, um likely to be done at the Truck Bar. Again, really just a thank you for giving their time and energy on the commission, I think the last one we did was probably early twenty twenty, just before all the craziness started. Looking to do a women owned business event, another kind of appreciation event, just because we've seen such huge growth, doing an event, get people together to network. Likely do a golf event, uh maybe breakfast or otherwise with real estate professionals, uh likely do an award night at Shulamino Country Club as we've done in the past. Last thing I want to mention, just because it is incredibly cool, which was an article in the Herald the other day that literally says. Berlin's business boom, it's on the front page of the paper.
Here we go.
Different businesses, Truck Bar, the coffee, uh Provision State Coffee. Um I knew she was doing an article, I had no idea, it would be as wonderful as that is. But um I just thank everybody on, on, on this board, as well as within leadership and within town hall, because the support of everybody has been tremendous. I, I get to do the fun part, I get to get out the ribbon and the scissors and celebrate, but a lot of it is the behind the scenes work, it's a support of Roche, and it's the things through Maureen's office and. Everybody else that, that's involved. Just thank you, it's been a heck of a twenty twenty two and looking forward to twenty three. And really looking to make Farmington Avenue walkable fun and uh. Get these folks uh open and some more food options.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
And, and all of this, obviously, as you said, Chris, is a team effort. With everyone in town, all the boards and commissions and um the town staff and every department um has to work together to. Make Berlin a great town that it is and uh growing and looking better every day, so.
And, and phone calls continue to come in.
That's great.
So looking at ways to grow here, looking to come here.
Yeah.
And right now, the biggest task for me is gonna be working on some of the larger pieces we have on how to develop them, uh the fifty seven acres where they look at the sports complex. Triangle, some other pieces, and it's just figuring out what to do with them. Some creativity, I think we can make it happen, the good news is, we've put an abatement uh. Policy together, which I think is both good but also aggressive, and it's really, it's an incentive, it's not even an abatement, it's incentive, which is the more you spend, the more you get. And I think, I, I don't know of any other communities doing that, and I think it really, I mean, you look at Forest Machine was our first, but others who want to invest and. I know this, this body's willing to work with me and them, which is great, because it, it makes it a lot more fun when you can say, hey. They believe right up to uh the town council level on what we're doing and. Appreciate everything you guys do.
It's great, yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you, Chris, thank you.
It's great, and, and you know, the other, the other towns have. I do talk some of the surrounding mayors on occasion and. They've noticed too, you know, Berlin's doing well, and I mean, they're all doing pretty well themselves, and Britain's doing well, they got a bunch of development going on, Rocky Hill does fairly well, and Newington, we're, we're all doing pretty well, but. Definitely a couple of developers have told me that Berlin, other towns, when they're looking at other towns, they do mention Berlin, like, well, hey, what's going on in Berlin, how come everybody's going to Berlin now, so it's definitely noted and uh. Just drive around town, you can't not, but help see what has occurred here and, and, and the last few, you know, number of years and certainly. Not for a lack of very hard work on everybody's part, you know, so that's what it takes, right, so it's all, it's all good.
Okay.
Can I?
It's Chris.
Thanks, okay, where are we at?
New business.
New business, okay.
Right. Everybody start?
Yes, let's, let's move.
All right, let's move.
Let's move right along, yeah.
First item on the agenda is the bid threshold for purchase of goods and services moving from ten to twenty five thousand. And the uh motion that we are requesting is to accept the language. Under um taxation and finance, sixteen dash two five six, it's on the second page. Uh this has been reviewed by Corporation Council. And um. As the mustess sort of say. So uh you've talked about this at length, again, the, the primary reason is to. Make government work efficiently, um be more responsive, get things done faster and um. So that the council can focus on more vision, strategy type of things, planning for the future, rather than. Uh rubber stamping administrative needs, like um, until the pen is said, most of the time we bring them, you approve it. And also this will give the option for us to, you know, if, if it's already gone out to bid by the state. Uh accept those state contracts or. Anything done by consortia, so that somebody else is doing it and don't re-bid it again.
Okay. Great, yeah, we, no, we just had our public hearing, we've talked about this, obviously, we talked about it being in the charter and being in an ordinance, we've kind of covered, I think, everything um. That we uh can, so. Unless we have some other questions or comments, we'll go ahead and take a motion, any other comments from anyone? No, all right. Take a motion.
Hope to accept the addition of subsection two five six to the town ordinance section sixteen. Taxation and finance is noted in the attached document, section sixteen dash two fifty six.
Thank you, second on that?
Second that.
Okay, any other comments or questions, uh this is, of course, as we have discussed, in the best interest of the town to do this and uh make our uh. Meetings and our town staff a little bit, uh work a little bit more um. Efficiently. So all those in favor?
I.
I opposed. All right, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Number two.
Agenda item number two is the uh. Legal services for the police department pension plan. We talked about this before and um our labor council. After discussing this matter with them, it's very specialized, they recommended two different firms because they are better at this. And we have one firm that um want to recommend uh Attorney Douglas Lamont, he's the partner. Uh Buckram Moses. And uh I consulted with Attorney Denafio, they do a lot of municipal work and specializes in his. The good reputation for this kind of work. And they also do a um. Oh, a little template that, you know, verifies everything that needs to be there in a pension plan, uh so that we don't miss anything. And Paula is here, in case you have any questions, but we want to try and get this rolling as quickly as possible, and since they are. Experts in this field, we anticipate to move this along very quickly.
That's great. Yeah, good, um. Yeah, now let's get it moving and uh we've spent a lot of time working on this, and I think we've, thank goodness, come to a meeting of the minds, uh at least at the general, the uh. The, you know, the major parts of the pension plan, I know there's. The devil's always in the details, which it helps to uh have an expert help us with this along with um. Uh Paula, of course. So unless you guys have questions for Paula, I mean, we're gonna, obviously, this will come back to the council when it's done, you know, there's, we're gonna see it, of course, and it also will go, has to go on to the union as well. So. Any questions, want Paula to come up, or are we comfortable, and we're gonna see this back, of course. Yes, please, yes. Yes. Yeah. Sure. We're gonna make, yeah, we're gonna make, uh, we tried, yeah.
I'm just waiting on is for him to get the quote from uh Relius, which is the program that makes that prototype, um it's a pre-approved I R S. Prototype template, so basically what it allows him to do is go in there and just modify it based on our terms. Which I think we'll anticipate a quicker process as well, because he's not gonna have to start it from scratch. Um opposed to, you know, yeah, just literally starting a document from nothing.
Yeah.
This will allow him to go in there and start with that pre-approved template, and then just modify it based on the terms that we've, you know, all agreed on. This will allow him to go in there and start with that pre-approved template and then just modify it based on the terms that we, you know, all agreed on. Hopefully that will move it along quicker as well.
Great. That's great. And Jeff, you're good, obviously, as the Roche explained.
Yes, I talked to Roche about this last week. I think it's definitely the way to go.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, if we gotta move quick on it, then it makes sense to affirm that has. Experience in a niche sort of area like this, so.
For sure. We need, we need police officers. And we're having a hard time as we have gone through. This process. So, you know, faster we move, the better off. Okay, so with that in mind, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter an agreement with Attorney Douglas Lamonti. From Breachham Moses to prepare pension plan documents for the police pension plan, not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. Second on that.
Well, second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All is in favor.
I.
Posed. All right, so moved.
Yeah, Paula.
Thank you, Paula. Appreciate it. Thanks, Jeff, for working.
Item number three is a time on wide rental and services of uniforms. I have a purchasing agent. Marissa Sauce.
Yes, I'm here, Arash. My video isn't working. I'm trying to get it to work, but it's not.
All right, I'll turn it over to you, Marissa. She's done a lot of homework on this. Give a little background. And. Then we'll discuss it afterwards. Over to you, Marissa.
Good.
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, perfect. Sorry, my video is not working, but I'm, I'm Marissa Solis, the town purchasing agent. The town's uniform contract is up. We went out to bid and we received three responses. Our plan is to stay with our incumbent, which is UniFirst. It will be approximately the same price we're paying now, maybe a little bit higher with a total annual cost of seventeen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and eighty eight cents. And the new contract will be for three years. Thank you.
Okay. Question, folks? Any questions? No, we're good. Okay, we're good. So we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter into a three year agreement with UniFirst Corporation of Indian Orchard, Massachusetts. For the rental of servicing uniforms, mats and reg utilizing pricing guaranteed under the current bid received.
Second on that.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Vote on the motion. All is in favor.
I.
Imposed. All right, motion carries.
Thank you, Marissa.
Thanks, Marissa.
Thank you.
Then item number four is the donation of generator. One thirty kilowatt generator to the Berlin Housing Authority.
Yes.
Here only because he's done so much work on this.
Yes.
It's tested and ready to go.
Great.
This is a formal request from you to donate it to the Berlin Housing Authority.
Yes, indeed.
Just to, just to recap, we will help with the transportation and they've agreed to install it.
Oh, nice.
Had and install it and.
Excellent.
That I'll give it to you.
Hi, Doug.
Good evening. Happy New Year, everyone. Welcome back. Hope you had a great holiday. There was an inquiry and some requests, I believe, from the housing authority to the council and the town for some assistance. This, this was looked at as one option. Though through the process, the generator is serviced, recommissioned and is a, is an option for the housing authority if they, if they choose to. Forward this option versus a new one. There's certainly a substantial savings, but this is a twenty year old model. So it is a working condition. Based on preliminary design criteria appears to be adequate, but it would require further design, electrical engineering. Confirm if this would serve the whole building, but it's certainly an option worth pursuing and. It could be a good opportunity for the town and the housing authority to use something that we already own, service both. Um, with the senior center and housing authority with elderly housing.
That's good. So I mean, preliminarily, as you have said, we believe this will work and, and housing authority is obviously interested.
Yeah, their commission, we spoke with representatives from the housing authority and their commission voted to accept it pending the outcome of the service and the recommission.
Sure. Okay, yeah, that's fair.
It appears to be a, we're in a position to continue further discussions. To see if there's an agreement to move forward further and whether the town can assist them.
Okay, great. While we certainly have dealt with this for a while now and. It's been a long road and hopefully. We're getting there to the end, which would help on our. Housing authority and our seniors there. So that's great. Any questions for Doug?
Thanks for working on this, Doug. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys getting to this point and hopefully we'll get to the end of the road here shortly. So. Without further ado, we can go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve the donation of one Generac one thirty KW diesel standby generator with the model number ninety nine A dash. Zero, six, zero, seven, seven dash S and serial number two, zero, five, one, one, seven, six. To the Berlin Housing Authority for use at number thirty one and thirty three Colonial Drive.
Good second on that.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions that have come to mind in the last couple of seconds? All right, none. All right. So all is in favor?
I.
Posed. Right, so moved.
Thank you. Good evening.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Doug.
Yeah, Doug. Item number five is a discussion topic about application for recreational trails, brand Pistol Creek, Lamentation Mountain and Hungerford Park. And Mr. Mahoney, I'll, you describe what this is all about.
Mr. Mahoney. All right, Mr. Mahoney.
Okay, so. We've previously gotten recreational trails grants, including for repaving of some of the card passed on a pistol creek. And this is another opportunity for us to pursue that grant program. It does require a twenty percent match, which can be in kind. And we may also be able to use the recent acquisition of land at Pistol Creek for part of our match or all of our match if we choose to. Depending on, you know, what, where we do the card pass and such. So we're presently in the process of scoping the applications and we're taking a little bit different approach this year. First, we've been denied the last couple of times with the Pistol Creek application. And we noticed that some of the applications that were approved were more comprehensive, broader projects. So. We have had dialogue with Middletown and. Middletown also had relatively recently purchased the rest of the Pistol Creek property in Middletown. So now the entire Pistol Creek Golf Course, former golf course is now owned by Berlin and Middletown. And Middletown also owns other open space in that vicinity, south on Atkins Street. Also, the Berlin Land Trust recently purchased a. Property on Lamentation Mountain just over the Middletown line. So there's opportunities for improvements there and we think connections between Pistol Creek. Where there's parking and the Lamentation Mountain Trails and also improvements to the Pistol Creek Cart Paths. And trails that are there in both Berlin and Middletown. So we're, we're starting to work on that app, on that concept. And obviously on both of these, we want to discuss them with you and make sure that this is consistent with the direction that the town council would like to take. One of the topics that's come up, I guess, on Pistol Creek is what's the intended use of the newly acquired portion of property? And I think. We'll probably want to make those, those portions of the cart pass walkable. They're have a lot more topography than. The, the main portions that we've been using in the past, but. We'll probably concentrate our efforts in terms of improvements to cart paths. On this, on the north side of Scrooshbrook Road as we have in the past. So I don't anticipate a lot of investment in that area, but perhaps some, just to short things up and make them walkable at least. But if the council, you know, has other intents for that property, you know, let us know and we can kind of work around that. And then the other topic is the Hungerford Park, which obviously is a great asset for the town, Hungerford Park and Nature Center. It's a unique property in that it's owned by the City of New Britain and operated by, by the nonprofit organization. And providing, you know, both the trails and educational programs for youth in the community for quite some time. And they have a trail system there. I've met with, with Donna and the director of Hungerford and. They're interested in approving the trails. They have some interesting trails there. It's not. As extensive, perhaps in terms of the distance of the trails, but I think the tie into the educational facilities is, is unique. And they've got, you know, a lot of assets there and parking and, you know, the trails are nice. So this is another area where we can. Make some improvements to trails, but again, a unique partnership because the property is owned by the City of New Britain. So those are our two concepts and just want to make sure that the town council is on board with this approach.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Yeah, no, it seems great. You know, anytime we can get a grant like this and improve some of our open space is wonderful and. Support our organ, different organizations in town. So, yeah, sounds good to me. What, what to say, all of you?
I think I appreciate all your efforts. I think this is a great project. Obviously, it's, the trails are open at Hungerford to the general public. We do a lot of special programming out of there, education. We work with both communities, Berlin and New Britain. I'm sure that New Britain would get on board with us for this. Particular project. So. That part of it is, is important. Of course, the other piece is also a great idea, too.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Good.
And we did, just to say, we reached out to Mayor Stewart and she's, she's enthusiastically, you know, supportive and. We've been working with, in Middletown, we were working with Mark Zikowski, our former planner. And they're, they're doing a lot in terms of open space. So we have a good, good partner there. So it's. We're excited about it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say that especially in the, the Pistol Creek part of town, the open space really is such a huge draw. And to the extent that we can facilitate its use. We should, absolutely. And, you know, we're always happy to help make that a reality. So thanks, Jim.
Yeah, thanks for your work, Jim. And obviously, I know you. Find these things if no one else does not. Sometimes different people find them, but it's good to bring it forward and yes.
Lucky to have you.
Yes, I appreciate it.
If I may ask. Jim and I talked about this. It is highly likely it's coming in the year after, between the state and the federal programs, we will have opportunities to apply for more grants. A lot of them will require a match, whether it's in kind or actual match itself. We have talked about this and what we would do in the budget process is to put some money aside for this so that. There's an opportunity. Obviously, it'll come back to the council for approval. If it's not something you want to do, we won't do it. But at, at least, you know, some of these things are twenty cents on the dollar or even fifty cents on the dollar. It's great ROI. And let's not leave money on the table. And if there are things that we can do to get more funds from outside.
Sure.
The town, we should position ourselves to do that.
Agreed.
Yep.
Yeah, agreed. And I also, while, while we're talking about Pistol Creek. At some point soon, maybe, now that we own it.
Yep.
Or more of it. We should have some discussion on Pistol Creek in general. Whether it's the clubhouse usage, which just seems to be rotting away. If we can figure out, I know, I know we've been trying to figure out things to do with it.
Something, yeah.
And with the addition of the additional property, maybe there's something we could do with that property or something to.
So just some long term plan.
Yeah, just a plan. We need a plan. There's, there's no plan and I don't know what the rest, you know, I don't know what the plan will be, but at least we should. You know, since now we bought that piece, we should, for good reason, we bought it, but maybe there's some other things we could do with it, you know.
The area being discussed at all for the P O C D. Is, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that it's in there.
It's in the plan.
Have they had any discussion about what they would like to see? Or as the, the property goes? I don't know.
Jim, you've been involved with some of the stuff, the P O C D.
Yeah, there's been some discussion. I think one of the topics in terms of open spaces that there, this. Property, we, we have, you know, again, the trail use of the existing property and. There are, this is one of a few of our properties that are used for open space. They're not these restricted. So we're still discussing with the Planning and zoning commission, conservation commission, et cetera. As to whether they want to recommend that any of these properties be. Be restricted for open space or, you know, what particular uses? And obviously, another area we're looking at. And I don't, not necessarily for Pistol Creek, but we are looking at. We're doing an analysis of all the town owned properties and kind of trying to put them into categories of what's open space, what's. We have a lot of small parcels that were, you know, donations for open, as part, as open space, as part of subdivision plans that are wet or. You know, just along streams, things like that, town facility parcels and then other parcels that might be. More opportunities for the town to consider other uses. So we're, we're still working on it. Is the, you know, long and short of it.
So before, so hence even more urgent that the council discuss some thoughts on, you know. Going forward with different town parcels. I agree if some can be repurposed or. Sold, quite frankly, if we don't need them anymore or whatever, whatever, whatever we need to do with, you know, we, we've talked about it before, parcel, you know, different things we might own that are not. Necessarily useful.
Yes.
As open space. Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
The staff would, what's together and.
Yeah.
Come up with the agenda item.
Yeah.
Possible options, discussion.
Yeah, but before we. Convert things to, you know.
Yeah.
Where we can't reverse it. So right before, before it's too late. So, all right, yeah, that'd be, that'd be good, Roche. You know, a general discussion, because I know we have a lot of parcels of land that are. Use, useless kind of to the town. I mean.
That area is a natural for playing fields.
Well, it's another issue too. Yeah, there's something else. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's something else we gotta talk about.
No, it's something we can discuss.
Yeah, yeah, no, there's a lot of different.
Again, one on one, if you want to send me ideas, that'll be great. We can put everything together and sort of hash things out and have a conversation about it.
Yeah, we got, we gotta figure out what to do. We, we should have a plan, you know, we've, I don't think we've had, the town has not really had a plan, right? We've acquired these properties, you know, through the years, right? You know, for good reason, but, but now maybe it's time to look at them a little bit closer and. See what we could do, right? Benefit the town, yeah.
Beautiful piece of land there.
Yeah, oh, yeah. That's all good.
Okay.
Yes, so we're, we're good on this, folks?
Yeah.
Great. I know we're gonna, it's gonna come back to us. So, okay, good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
I'm thankful. Happy to.
And my condolences for your brother.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Item number six is the request to waive the town on Berlin requirement for the purchase of one fire. Brought us from Pierce Manufacturing. Simon's here to give you an update. You know, some time ago, you funded this. It's just of these trucks.
Yes.
I think we are in a position to, whatever one and. Uh, we'll need a waiver from you.
I. I thought you were here just because you were so interested in our meeting tonight. I didn't know that you needed to talk to us about anything. There you go.
Good job.
We like it. That's good.
Government efficiencies.
Yes, yeah. No talking, just voting.
This will be the replacement for the last American Le France that was purchased in two thousand two, when we bought the four of them. Trucks back then. Actually, it worked out pretty good for moving forward because of the supply problems and manufacturing problems you're gonna see. But you'll see in another twenty years, they'll be staggered out quite nicely.
Oh, nice.
But this is the last pieces going to the East Berlin Station.
Okay. And where are we at now? Jim, overall, where are we, where are we at overall?
So with this purchase.
Yeah.
There won't be another purchase made until two thousand twenty eight, two thousand twenty nine.
No.
Wow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good.
Nice job.
And once, once it comes around again.
Yeah.
It'll be spaced out.
Okay. I mean, we spaced this out pretty good accordingly, right? You know, I know we, we were kind of.
Considering, yeah.
Yeah, considering what we faced, but we seemed like this has worked well. And not, you know, killed us.
The supply issues, you know, that even spaced out a little.
Okay, right.
So if you order it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Won't be here for a certain amount of time.
What do you think? What, a year?
Or? Three years.
No, really? Three years?
The trucks you ordered last year.
Yeah.
Remember you had last December.
Yeah.
You're still not in.
Right.
They won't, they're, they were estimated to be here in August. They have now been pushed off to next December.
Oh, come on. Oh, my God.
Then.
You can't, you can't buy anything automotive right now.
I know. Wow.
See things getting better, but you don't clearly.
Not better, huh?
Wow.
Even, even with the smaller stuff.
Right.
Still saying that this problem's gonna be here for another eighteen months.
Really?
We are, you know, and I was talking to Councilor Russell in the shop.
Yeah.
We are doing extensive repairs now. We never thought about doing repairs that we're doing now.
Right.
But we're doing those repairs just to extend the life of these trucks. You can't get them.
You can't even get them if you wanted to get them. You can't just go.
You want to pay
But
a lot of money.
A big premium. Okay.
I mean, the F four fifties, F five fifties, a decent F five fifty right now is over a hundred thousand dollars, just for the capital.
Oh.
We're paying thirty five thousand dollars.
Oh, come on. How how long ago was the thirty five thousand? Two years ago.
That's crazy.
Not inflation there, no inflation there at all.
It's all good.
Vans are, you just purchase vans.
Yeah.
Van, we used to pay, uh, out the door, complete was twenty seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, they were pretty.
Two thousand dollars.
Oh, they're up.
So we went to go and look for used vans.
Yeah.
Coming off a lease.
Good luck, right? Can't find them.
Walked in the door, they said it's forty two thousand dollars.
Same, same. Yeah. You got you got nothing else, no choices. Wow. You know that Charlie probably with your
A hundred thousand dollars, a pickup truck now.
Yeah. That's crazy.
I'll drive my old car.
I guess so. I guess we're stuck with the old car for a while. Yeah. Okay, well, good. Well, that's great. I'm glad we moved forward with, you know, with this and um got replacements. I know they're in the pipeline still, but at least we've taken action and done the right thing for for you guys and keep you guys safe, keep the town safe. So that's what it's all about. So, okay, questions for Jim?
I just want to thank the
Yeah, wanna go home now? Wanna hang out longer?
I want to thank Jim and the chiefs that worked on this plan. They've been working on it for many years and paid off. They did a great job for us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
So good, yeah. All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to waive the town of Berlin's bidding requirements and award the purchase of one combination fire engine, engine seven from Pierce Manufacturing for an amount not to exceed nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Vote on the motion. All is in favor.
Aye.
Posed.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, Jim.
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, where we at? So as we send um Mr. Jim home, I think we should send ourselves home. So I, if if we would give us, there is a very large list here and we always do it the second, I know. So that's why I'm making sure we're okay with that. And we had a lot to look at and, you know, it was the holidays. So some of us probably didn't peruse this as closely as we should have, including myself.
Some of us are still hungover.
Yeah, well, that too, maybe. It's a little bit after New Year's. But um so, yeah, just we have all this info, which is, which is great. Uh we got a lot of info. And come back and look at it and hopefully get some of this, if not most of it done next time.
And which of you really think it's right?
Yes, no, there's a lot there. Yes. Our most, am I get most, looks like want to be reappointed, right? Is it a higher percentage or no?
Not a hundred percent.
No, not a hundred, but it seems like a lot.
There's a lot that would like to.
Would like to be, yeah. That's what I noted. Yeah, I did note that.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, that's good. That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, of course. Okay.
And there's a couple of people who asked to put on that are new and stay with time with them.
Okay, oh, good. Well, that's a good problem to have then. So, yeah, that's good.
Instincts, Kate, you have more people
Spots?
Available spots.
At at uncertain commissions. Okay. Yeah.
There's been a lot for board, um
What?
Board of Ethics.
A lot for the Board of Ethics? Yeah, I did see a bunch there.
I mean, there's two, there's some positions open.
Yeah.
Space and seats. There's two others that also and that's one, one very positive.
Yeah.
Right.
Same with the golf commission, too.
Oh, yeah, is there some actual ones on the golf? I thought I saw a couple of names and I didn't recognize that. Okay, well, we'll do some homework and
When we formed the golf commission, we wanted some people from the public and some, and how do we know? I know, we know what party they're in, but how do we know? Because then we want some people from the men's club and some from the other club and
We tried to do it, right. We tried to do more. I'm not, I don't know if we really ever got.
Is my question.
Did we ever really get a nice distribution of different groups there? I I I know we tried to get there, right? I don't think we did, right? I I mean, just just groups that maybe are not represented, right? Or or too many from one group or not enough from another or
If I decide I probably want to put that out.
Yeah. It's a problem. Right.
They will say
What group they're with, right?
Yeah, like the change with the Timberland, uh Lady Knight or
Right.
You know, there's a
Right.
So and some of these people, of course, you know.
Yeah, some we could figure out, but you know.
Some who have, I mean, they're
You have like, like Jim Norton with a background in in um golf business and golf repair and, yeah, so in the additional comments.
Yeah, William Richards says that he's the current vice president for the senior men's league.
Right.
Um so I mean, you have to not just look at the affiliation, of course, but
No.
That was my point.
Well, their background, too. Yeah, every, everything. All right, so yeah, we, because, you know, I know we we tried our best last time, right in the beginning. I mean, it's a relatively new commission and I'm not sure we achieved exactly what we wanted, although they're doing a great job. Don't get me wrong. I'm not trying to say that, but I just want to make sure that, you know, Timberland has many folks that use it a lot and uh you know, the more
Want to get a cross section.
Yeah, right. The the more voices from different, you know, folks in different groups or just independent residents, too, really, that, you know, I don't know if we have them well represented either, just just someone who golfs and maybe is not part of some of these clubs. I I don't know. Right? So so maybe we just have to look at that a little bit. Again, they're doing a great job. They're helping out, but, you know, if we can improve upon any, any of the commissions, that speaks for all of them, right? If we can improve upon them. That's great. If we have folks that are interested, that's wonderful. All right. Okay, well, thank you, Kate, for getting this so all together and we'll we'll certainly look at it. Yes, leave your reading.
We'll try not to have too many agenda items next time.
Next time, okay, yeah.
We'll spend time on this.
Yeah, yeah, we got to spend a lot of time. We got a lot.
Try that.
It's that time of year. Um, okay. Okay, great. Oh, great. Well, thank her, please, for us. And everybody in your office always helps out. I know it's a team effort, as always, everywhere. So appreciate that. Okay, so town managers report. Oh, you're done? Oh, man. No special committees, no constant communications, except that minutes done adjournment. Look at that. Hopefully, we'll get through that.
One minute left. Uh, just, just a few items.
We don't want to rush you, Roche. We're not saying that. We like to hear from you.
Right.
We know that.
So Chris briefly mentioned this and I send you a copy of the award letter, which is great, the one point five million dollar grant from D E C D. Um Donna and everybody else, thanks for writing the support letters. Uh all those things help the other day. So uh we have to work with the C D now to come up with a plan and exactly still what we're gonna do and they have to accept it.
Clip for this.
It's all done. We'll bring it back to you again, but this is an example of another creative way that Jim, Simon Mahoney, put this together. Um taking into consideration some of the in-kind contributions and other things, but we also have a little contribution that we were able to get together, but the return was great on it. So we'll, we'll continue to um have items like that. Uh you should have a um copy of the article that Joe Ferraro did with the New Britain Herald on the revale. It's a question and answer thing. I included that in your package as well.
Yeah, I saw that. That's good.
Tell residents.
Folks, not to go, not to be too worried.
Easy.
Yes, not to panic.
Contact if they have any questions and there's a whole process in place, uh even after they're not happy with the the answers they get. They they get to appeal it uh the other day and mostly to understand that not everything went up equally. And just because your value goes up, that doesn't mean your taxes automatically go up.
Yeah, those of us that calculated what it would cost are quite concerned, but that's all right. We know things will even out in the end, right? Oh, it was not, it was not pretty.
Oh, the percentage increase.
The percentage on mine was, it is about twenty five percent, twenty twenty five percent, right? Yeah.
I thought you live in a well-run town.
Wow, that's true.
Want some uh
We're happy the values.
Information.
Yes, let's hear yours.
Properly.
Yeah, let's hear it.
Fifty five percent.
I know you told me that.
I don't want to hear it. The condo there.
Condo? Yeah, wow. I would get a hearing on that one. Yeah, that seems very high.
There's a logic behind all this, right?
Yes, no, I know.
Room, so you see that new portal, so they, it's such a high demand, they can't, they even change some of the two into one, because that's where the demand is, the market is, it drives the price up.
And, you know, I I I read the article briefly, but did he, you know, he did a, Joe did a good job of explaining to me, just personally, you know, when it first came out, so I knew how to answer questions, but it was great that he explained that the value, you know, the assessed value, because I I looked at my, my neighbors had sold this summer, right? And I looked at the assessed value, their house, my house, and I said, well, that's low compared to what they sold their house for in July, right? So he said they did factor in, which is great to for people to understand this, that, you know, housing values are at all time high. I'm sure they're probably headed down. I think they've already headed down somewhat, right? So that factored that in. So he's not, you know, he, the town, any, any of us that are going to prove a mill rate, let's say, going forward or the values, I mean, that they were already factored in that prices will most likely go down some, which was good to see. It wasn't assessed at the highest value that he, the company probably, not Joe, but that the, they could have done. So that that was good to see. Yeah, making it fair for the, you know, because we don't have another one for five years and values are going to go down. Now you're paying on the higher value, except for yourself. Yours is staying the same. I make sure it was a special case for a Roche to anyway. So, yeah, it was a good explanation. Was make sure, and I haven't seen, I think most people have been around long enough to understand what how this works and that the mill rate will most likely be adjusted. Board of Finances, I know, gonna do work on that. And um, yeah, I mean, because obviously, it's not, I'll, some people don't, right, understand it's not, our budget is our budget and we only need so much money and it's, you know, that much more. We don't need to collect that from folks.
The question comes when
Yeah.
how much the businesses, how they were affected.
Uh, they weren't as high, though, right?
As high.
They were, uh
Yeah.
Yeah, commercial property.
So that'll, yeah, that'll tip the board a little bit for
That too.
the homeowner.
Yes, yes.
You know, that's, well, you try, try to explain that also. It's
Yeah, he, yeah, he did. He only, so most, a lot of homes are twenty to twenty five percent range, I think.
And and commercial properties, I think, are
Were less.
Down.
There were
Are they the only slightly slight increase relative to
Yeah, I think he said they were an average of thirteen percent higher.
Right, which is
Commercial properties, right?
Half as much on average.
Single families, twenty, twenty five, specialty properties, like a Roche lives in the Taj Mahal there, that's one of fifty five percent. So specialty properties, but um so there is a range depending upon, right, what the market
Yeah.
showed happened to to values, which we know most values have gone up. So, but yeah, it, there's a, and I haven't seen too, too many people seem to be sitting back and waiting. I think we've got the word out enough to say, look, wait until the budget comes out, right?
Also, the ones who are really concerned.
Yeah.
They've got reached out to the assess.
Right, they've got that.
Them and they've reached out to the company. So
Right.
I mean, initial reaction is when you get it.
Yeah.
They'll just say, whoa, whoa, but you know, everything being equal, the mill rate should go down if the budget doesn't increase, but even if the increase
Yeah.
I want to say this publicly, but the mill rate should come down.
Yeah, I would think that's probably where we're headed. Um but, you know, we have some time for that. But, yeah, or they can certainly reach out to the company, right?
Most people don't, I don't, I shouldn't say this, not that they don't care. They actually don't care about the mill rate. They want to know how much taxes go up.
Just wanna, yeah, with the bill, with the, what the bill is gonna be.
All things considered, what is the
What is the bill going to be next tax year? Yes, that's all we really care about. What's coming out of pocket, right?
You know, I mean, in certain, in certain municipalities this year, they cut the mill rates significantly and taxes still went up.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, that's just the way um residential properties are right now.
Yeah.
All right. Um
Anyway.
Next item, we talked about this property at Pistol Creek. Just a shout out to Jeff and his team and the real estate attorney who worked with us, the Rio Vista Closing. Everything is finalized, money is paid.
Great.
Recorded, all the settlement agreements being signed, releases executed. Finish.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff. Hey, Jeff, you got, you have COVID?
Yeah.
Oh, lucky, luck, lucky you. Sorry to hear that. Happy New Year.
Yeah, thanks.
Oh, my God. Yeah, you sound it now. I didn't hear in your voice before. You definitely, yeah, yeah. Maybe he's got the jammy bottoms.
You have the jammy pants.
He might have the jammy pants on, uh, under there.
But they're nice charcoal to match your jacket, right, Jeff?
Got a motion to adjourn.
We're almost there. We're almost there.
Stand up.
We're, we're, we're speeding there. We're speeding.
Jeff, did you hear about Calamari?
No.
They're back.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Through you.
All right, I'll keep going.
Yes, yes, we're speedily going to that adjournment. Yes.
Just a update again, um the National Opioid Settlement Agreement.
Oh, yeah.
Um we have got two tranches totaling almost twenty thousand dollars so far.
Yeah.
We keep getting and we looked at what's coming down the pipe. Can't add up. It goes to like fifty thousand altogether. And Jeff, again, has been the point person involved in dealing with the town, the courts. So the um, the agreement states that the funds ought to be used for opioid remediation and there's a specific criteria as to how they can be used. And obviously, I'm not the expert on how to use these funds for opioid remediation. So what I'm doing right now, I'm putting together a group education, maybe some of the nurses. I've contacted Brian for that, the Berlin P D, because they deal with a lot of the folks with opioid crisis, social services. So Connecticut Health District and the V N A. Put a small group together, have the experts sort of decide what's the best way to meet the criteria of the settlement agreement. Then also to see what model will suit um meet the needs of Berlin.
Right. Um, yeah, town's different, yeah.
Yeah, so from schools to social services to B to education will be able to uh figure out how best to use those funds.
Yeah, it's great. We got some funding to help folks. It's too bad. We have to
Yeah.
get that money for what has happened because of it, but so we have some funding to help.
Right? I'll, I'll keep you updated as we make progress. Uh there is a letter that actually came to me and copied you. You know, so I copied from the Emory Cor Seniors. It's a request from them to service that our seniors use. Um when the town facilities are not there, weekends, evenings, or medical transportation. Like I reached out to Tina and she said the seniors use them a lot, uh and it's free. You come pick them up, take them to hospitals, doctors, visits, other things our seniors need. Um the, the letter is asking the council to consider from this group donation, suggesting like a thousand dollars. If you're comfortable with it, I'll, I'll prepare an agenda item and find amount of money. I think it'll be a good thing to do. It's helping one towns. And um they provide a valuable service to our seniors. So um if you want some time to think about it, do so. I mean, I can take it up to them, too.
No, if we read it, you guys looked at this and obviously, we're in town, you know, we are able to take some advantage of this service, our seniors. So that seems like a very reasonable donation request, would be my opinion, if you guys all agree. We good with that? Did you guys read it over?
We can't approve it now, though.
No, no, no.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
No, no, no.
It sounds, it sounds good.
It's okay, right?
Service we utilize.
Yes.
Behind sofa cushions and all that for some change. Come on, put some bucks for somebody's budget. So.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, no, I think that's reasonable to bring it forward.
Yeah.
Right?
If you have any comments, feel free to reach out to me, but I think it's a good. Next item. This is actually pertains to eight, the cotton system, the, what uses for the land records. There was a. Security breach, cyber attack.
Really?
Not here, the vendor, and the system's been down since.
The vendor?
The vendor and they hopefully will be online tomorrow, so still, that means. Folks had to do a lot of work manually and things and all that, but wanna.
Yeah, it was a cyber attack that occurred Christmas Day, so it was any, and it's across the nation, any of the towns that use. Top mainly if you, um, use them for the, uh, if I understand it correctly, the iCloud. So we decided not to have the servers because of problems with servers, so we went to the cloud and, um. Now, there've been, I think they've been very good about keeping us posted on a daily basis on where they stand. Um, the FBI, of course, has been called in. Um, the FBI knows this group. That is doing the, uh, you know, stimulated the attack and everything, um, so they are working very closely with the FBI. Um, unfortunately, it has affected, uh, now, some towns don't have the I, they don't have the cloud. We do, so other towns are able to function pretty well. The resolution system where people look up and do title searching has been down.
Cool.
Right, so people have had to come in to do the title search versus the old way.
Yeah, the old way, oof, remember the old way. You don't.
Oh. I can imagine. The new way's not so great either.
Probably not, but it was worse back then.
Yeah, but, um, they feel that we will be up to eighty-five percent tomorrow, so we can start, um. Cause we've held all of our recordings, they're in proper order, they are timed and date on when they were received, so we can backdate them. Um, last week, when we knew this was becoming more of an issue, especially because I'm president of the Town Cubs Association. I reached out to Kat, to, um, to Kat and to our public administrator, um, Neon Burbank. With the town, with the state, I talked to, um, Attorney DiNocchio, to, um. Of course, town manager, also, uh, C C M has reached out to our lobbyists for some information. So I ta- um, talked to our lobbyists for C C M, so, uh, I will say people have been very nice, very understanding about it. And, um, we go forward to trying to do our catch-up tomorrow.
Well, it's good you're getting there to catch up. Okay, well, we're sorry that had to happen, but. Sounds like they're fixing it.
It just tells you a lot about there's issues, no matter what you do.
A world we live in.
Other software vendors have stepped in and have said that it could happen to them too.
Anywhere.
Yeah. But, hot pot it, um, there's no, nothing was. Yes, so that's the best thing right there, and I'd rather have them take the time and make sure. Correct and no malware or anything.
See a piece of paper that's like in my drawer somewhere? You know what? They can't hack that. They can't hack into that, can they?
Nice, now you sound like me.
Sorry, that's just what happens. Don't save the paper, throw it out, but sometimes, I don't know, right? You wonder sometimes, yeah, anyway.
It's a very different world when I started.
That's for sure. That's for sure. What time did you start?
I started in nineteen eighty-eight.
Yeah, 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 different, completely different, anyway.
No, I wasn't. You can say it. Negative, negative, uh, eight years old.
Eighteen eighty-eight, okay.
Eight of six, excuse me, I can't even.
Oh, very nice, very nice. Excellent.
All right, sort of change.
Oh, my goodness.
Roche is getting cagey on time.
All right. Time's, time's ticking. Wanna keep moving?
Yeah.
Poor Jeff's gotta go lay down. We're sorry, Jeff.
Doug, um, uh, Solak, uh, that's a list director had asked. If I could accommodate, uh, personal reasons, uh, reduction in his hours for reduction in his pay. Uh, like a twenty-five percent reduction, well, seventy-five percent.
For who?
The next, Doug Solak.
Oh.
The next, so I said not permanently, but for three months for him to got out things.
Okay.
So we've tried for three months, so he'll, he'll be here every day, he'll be on call all the time. But he'll have a reduced schedule for a reduced pay, three months, um, but. Just if I, I, you know, I, I, both of us have an understanding. If things don't work well, we can, um.
Figure it out.
Figure it out and also shift gears and bring it back because, you know. Very soon we'll be having a lot of the projects coming up with the high school. H B S E project and a lot of the other things that are going on with the fields and also he's. Part of it. All right?
Yep.
Um, we had, uh, ordinance committee meeting that was scheduled for the fifth at six o'clock, which we are gonna cancel for various reasons. Um, Tony Coppola and the chief needs a little bit more time, but, you know, holidays, sickness, other things going on. Uh, and we'll. Schedule it in a couple of weeks after that. Uh, there's nothing dire that needs to happen, but I would rather. Do the homework and bring the stuff to you rather than just having a meeting. Um, we have a call with the local state representatives, whether they're here and putting stills. Um, January fifth at four thirty P M, I have, uh, attached, I send the agenda to everyone, but you have a copy, all of you council members. Of the topics that we wanna, um. Discuss and just to get their advice and feedback with some of the things that are happening in town and. Coming down the pike. Call.
Just a call.
Yeah, you're more than welcome to come in person. Yeah, so. We think Donna, when we started, it's at least when I was here, it was all the COVID thing, so we did a call and it has worked out for everyone. And front page, I have the calling number and the pin, just dial it.
There it is, right there. Look at that.
And the, at thirty P M on January fifth, try to keep it to an hour. Um, given a little bit more description so folks can read it and, um, I mean, if you don't have the answers, we just wanna. Bring these matters to your attention and talk through the stuff. I know.
But it's good to at least discuss it upfront, so we know what your goals are.
Yeah, and thanks for coordinating that then agreeing to meet with us so early.
It's good that we can all get in the same room, metaphorically speaking, and, um, figure out an agenda for the town and to the extent that. Don and I can help on the house side of things and and Rick can help on the center side of things, we'll. Try to get stuff done.
Okay, and, uh, you also have a new council member orientation, January twelfth at four thirty P M for. Austin and, uh, Sammy Coppola. Hopefully by then she can join. We have lined up, uh, a few department heads and we're gonna bind it for you to take home. And, um, there'll be a quiz at the end. If you graduate, you get a.
Little town pen.
It's a good, it's a great pen.
Nice pen.
Looking for it, Casey.
I'm sure it'll be a breeze for you. So, um, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much, Roche. Appreciate it. What's, what's, what's next? What we got here?
Special committee.
Oh, yes, special committees. Um, I think you you've covered the special committees.
Yeah.
Doing my agenda. So I think, I think we're good with that. We got counselor, what Communications is next. Do we have any, uh, communications from anyone? That would be the time. Hearing none, we'll move on to acceptance of minutes on the thirteenth.
Yeah, we accept the minutes as presented.
Excellent.
Number thirteenth minute.
Second on that. All right, thank you very much. All those in favor?
Hi.
I posed, so moved. And. Motion to adjourn, right?
So moved.
All right, all is in favor?
Hi.
Posed, all right, so moved. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, folks.
Hey, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. Feel better, feel better.
Thank you for joining us.
Yeah. Oh, my goodness, right? And 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 Jen.
Jennifer is four times, back to back, back to back. She's the long hauler. Now she's weak, the doctors don't know what to give her. She's got a cough and fight head at best.